Quiet on the floor, please. Quiet on the floor. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader, it's all yours.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome to the meeting of the, welcome the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the, by, to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, the God of all, and of all its laws. Roll call.
Here.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Botcher.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Here.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Felice.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy.
Here.
Moreno.
Here!
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Here.
Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
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 Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikov.
Sorry, here.
Williams.
Here.
One.
Present.
Juang.
Here.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Obispo Alejandro Ramos Joseph of Iglesia de Dios de la Profesía, which is located at three eighty-seven South First Street in Brooklyn.
All rise.
Amado Dios y Padre nuestro. Te damos gracia en este momento por permitirnos reunirnos con un propósito común. Reconocemos que toda autoridad proviene de ti y que somos llamados a servirte con humildad, sabiduría y justicia. Te pedimos que tu espíritu santo sea guiado en cada decisión, que todas las palabras sean llenas de respeto, verdad, y que todo lo que se haga sea para el bien común y en beneficio de las personas que han confiado en cada uno de ellos. Ponemos en esta reunión en tus manos, Señor, confiando en tu dirección en el nombre de Jesucristo, the number Father, and the Son, and the Spirit Santi. Amen. God bless you, everybody.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez to spread the invocation on the record.
Muchas gracias, Obispo. It is my great honor to present Obispo Alejandro Ramos, pastor of Iglesia de Dios de la Profesía on Union Avenue in the, in the south side of Williamsburg, just a few blocks from my office. Bishop Ramos has faithfully served in this ministry for more than thirty-three years. We recognize not only his leadership within the church, but also the vital role he and his congregation play in our community by hosting events, block parties, and his vision that he shared for the neighborhood, for the congregation at large, and for anyone who's willing to listen, whether it's related to mental health services, programming and resources for the youth, expanding the food pantry. He has a real ear to the community, and I'm really looking forward to how he's going to transform it. We are truly blessed to have him here with us today to offer the invocation. Gracias por acompañarnos, gracias por esperar, y gracias por esa hermosa invocación. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now ask Minority Leader Joanne Ariola for the adoption of minutes.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M one sixty-seven, Councilmember Rivera.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M one sixty-eight through M one seventy-two.
Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher. Thank you. Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers. Thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
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 Felice.
How do you like that?
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you. Mamorato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moreno.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley. Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Thank you. Juang.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of forty sixteen the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge the tragic death of two New Yorkers and Councilmember Lindelies' district who tragically passed away from a house fire deemed as arson this week. We pray that this perpetrator is caught sooner than later, and our hearts are with the family and loved ones of Frank Alton and Maureen Alton. Tomorrow, our city and nation will observe the twenty-fourth anniversary of September eleventh. As a native New Yorker, I will once again be present to memor, to memorialize the day that our lives were forever altered. As we approach this solemn anniversary, we honor the memories of the thousands of lives taken too soon, and we acknowledge the ongoing grief of their families and loved ones. We must also continue to pay tribute to the first responders, rescue workers, and everyday New Yorkers who ran towards danger to save lives. Twenty-four years later, many are still suffering from life-threatening, threatening illnesses from being exposed to toxins, so we must continue to support them by ensuring they receive the care they deserve. This year, the council passed a resolution led by Councilmember Gail Brewer to direct an investigation into what information mayoral administrations knew about the environmental risks caused by the attacks at the World Trade Center site. Through this commitment and action, we can honor their sacrifice and continue to heal from this tragedy. September fifteenth marks the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, during which we uplift the contributions and achievements of Latino communities across the country. New York is home to two-point-five million Latino residents of diverse backgrounds, cultures, and traditions. We also recognize the groundbreaking Latino leaders in this body who continue to serve this city with great dedication. I also want to wish a Happy Independence Day to our Costa Rican, Honduran, Salvadoran, and Guatemalan communities who are celebrating on September fifteenth. We also wish a Happy Mexican Independence Day on the sixteenth, Chile Independence Day on the eighteenth, and Belize Independence Day on the twenty-first. September is National Sickle Cell Awareness Month. Sickle cell disease is the most common inherited blood disorder in the United States and disproportionately affects African Americans. I am proud that this council has enacted important legislation to create guidance to educate medical professionals and the public on detecting and managing sickle cell disease. Last year, we also enacted a bill to require reporting on sickle cell disease for public school students so we can promote better health outcomes for our students. Together, we will continue to support New Yorkers who have sickle cell disease and their families. September is also Suicide Prevention Month. As our city continues to grapple with a mental health crisis, it's important that New Yorkers know where to go for support and treatment. NYC Well counselors are available twenty-four by seven in over two hundred languages, and you can always call eight-eight-eight NYC WELL or nine-eight-eight, the suicide and crisis lifeline for help. Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, starts on the evening of September twenty-second through September twenty-fourth. I want to wish everyone a sweet, peaceful, and prosperous New Year. Shana Tova to all New Yorkers who are celebrating. Finally, please join me in wishing a happy birthday to Councilmember Camila Hanks, whose birthday was on September fourth. Councilmember Gail Brewer, whose birthday was on the sixth.
I hate birthdays!
Councilmember Sandra Ung, who celebrated yesterday. And Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, whose birthday is coming up on the fourteenth. Happy birthday, September. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. Ocean Crest Technical Correction will amend a previously approved Article eleven tax exemption to correct an error regarding the subject property block and lot information in majority with Brooks Powers District. Fifty-six oh two dash fifty-six oh four Broadway rezoning will facilitate the redevelopment of a pre-existing property in Councilmember Dinowitz's district into a thirteen-story twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-six unit, one-hundred percent affordable residential building under HPD's Ella program. The council will disapprove Cozy Corner Bar's application for irrevocable consent to operate a sidewalk cafe in Councilmember Holden's district. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon would establish a new forty-year Article eleven tax exemption for twenty-eight lots in the districts of Councilmembers Stevens and Sanchez. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new forty-year Article eleven tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Sanchez's district, and a pre-considered resolution also sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new forty-year Article eleven tax exemption for five lots in Councilmember Sanchez's district. Today, we'll vote on the following legislation. Resolution three sixty-two A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass on the governor to sign A seven oh one S nine-eight-eight, the Social Workers Workforce Act. Thank you to our staff members, Zamenta Kilowan, Nina Rosenberg, and Justin Campos. Introduction twelve fifty-eight A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to establish a procedure to request correction of the sex designation on a death record and post an application form and instructions for making such a request on its website. Introduction eight sixty-seven A, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would ban the sale and distribution of menstrual or intimate care products that contain intentionally added harmful ingredients listed on packaging label, including chemicals and fragrance. Thank you to our staff members, Julia Goldsmith Pinkham and Katie Salina. Introduction seven fifty-one B, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require an agency or office designated by the mayor to develop and maintain Residential Fire Emergency Response Guide for individuals affected or displaced by a residential fire. Thank you to our staff members, Josh Kingsley and William Honggat. Introduction seven ninety-one A, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler, would require the Department of Social Services to post on its website the total number and percentage of all supportive housing units in the city that are vacant, as well as the number of vacant units at different stages in the placement process. Introduction eleven seventy-five A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would require the office to end domestic and gender-based violence to establish a program, subject to appropriation, to provide income-eligible domestic violence survivors with both brief legal assistance and full legal representation throughout a divorce proceeding. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, this council allocated one-point-three million dollars to launch this critical initiative. It is not enough for us just to acknowledge and talk about survivors of crime, but actually invest in their safety and well-being. Introduction twenty-eight, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the delivery worker bicycle safety course developed by the Department of Transportation to cover the safe and lawful operation of powered bicycles, as well as lithium-ion battery and charging safety. A third-party food delivery service could have their license suspended or revoked for failing to provide bicycle safety equipment, identification, or retro reflective apparel to their delivery workers. This bill builds on the council's efforts to advance a sustainable delivery sector and address concerns related to delivery app services and workers. Thank you to our staff members, Sarah Swain and Natalie Melzer. We'll also vote on several bills that were recommended by the Independent Rikers Commission in their blueprint to close Rikers. These legislative solutions will help improve access to mental health care, reduce recidivism, and ensure coordinated leadership to reduce case delays and the inflated jail population. They also follow key investments the council secured in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget to advance the closure of Rikers. Introduction twelve thirty-eight A, sponsored by Councilmember Gutierrez, would require the Department of Correction to ensure all persons in custody with a pending criminal proceeding have the technology necessary to securely receive and review case evidence via a department-issued tablet or through access provided in the law library. Introduction twelve forty-eight, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, upon request of a person in custody or, or their attorney, to conduct a holistic needs assessment when one is required for acceptance into a court-based alternative to incarceration program. And introduction twelve forty-two A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the establishment of an Office of Coordinator for Rikers Island Closure and the establishment of Coordinator for Borough-Based Jail Transition within DOC. Together, they will be responsible for coordinating actions and policies by agencies with a role in the closure of Rikers Island. Thank you to our staff members, Jeremy Whiteman and Natalie Melzer. Finally, we will be overriding Mayor Adams' vetoes of three bills that support and protect our city's workers, entrepreneurs, and immigrant communities. This legislation advances policies and protections for working-class New Yorkers who power our neighborhoods and economy, including the growing delivery sector. Despite his own administration negotiating on and supporting these bills, Mayor Adams has chosen to abandon working people and disregard the work of his own staff, to leave working-class New Yorkers vulnerable to continued exploitation and Trump's extreme agenda that betrays them. First are the bills that advance a sustainable delivery sector that Mayor Adams has claimed to be a priority but has vetoes undermine. Introduction eleven thirty-three A, sponsored by Councilmember Gutierrez, would extend the same wage and workplace protection that food delivery workers enjoy to all contracted grocery delivery workers who are integral to the delivery sector. These protections include requirements for providing transparent information, access to bathrooms, distribution of fire safety materials, and insulated delivery bags. This bill would also require DCWP to study working conditions and determine a minimum pay rate for contracted delivery workers. Introduction eleven thirty-five A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require third-party grocery delivery services to pay their delivery workers a minimum pay rate that would meet or exceed that set by DCWP. When the law establishing minimum pay standards for food delivery workers went into effect, it did not meaningfully increase food costs for customers. These businesses have since grown, experiencing their highest consumer spending in the first quarter of this year. These laws simply ensure that the workers who are the foundation of this industry are paid fair wages that sustain the sector in our city. And introduction forty-seven B, sponsored by Councilmember Shaker Krishnan and recommended by the administration's own street vendor advisory board, would remove the excessive criminal misdemeanor penalties for general vendors and mobile food vendors. Contrary to the mayor's false claims, vendors who operate without a license could still be subject to violations, fines, or civil penalties. By removing misdemeanor criminal penalties, this bill ensures New Yorkers will not have their access to education, housing, or jobs blocked, or become a target of the Trump administration for simply trying to make a living and feed their families. Thank you to our staff members, Sarah Swain and Natalie Melzer. Thank you, colleagues, for your attention, and I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Nurse, followed by Menon, then Caban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today is a clear indictment of Mayor Adams and his failure to stand up for working New Yorkers. I'm proud to be here overriding his veto of my bill, intro eleven thirty-five. Intro eleven thirty-five is simple. It requires a minimum wage for twenty thousand grocery delivery app workers. All we're asking for is twenty-one dollars an hour, which is barely enough to survive in this city. But even that was too much for a thirteen-billion-dollar company, and the mayor sided with them. He has abandoned working people and immigrant workers. We're also passing the first wave of bills from the Lippman Commission, including my intro twelve forty-two A, which creates an office to coordinate the transition from Rikers to Borough-Based Jails and move us toward a renewable Rikers. Forty-five people have died at Rikers under this administration, five in just the last two weeks. These deaths are not inevitable. They are the result of a mayor who refuses to act, and we cannot continue to have negligent deaths on our watch. This bill will finally force the coordination and planning that we have been asking for and that is urgently needed to close Rikers. I want to thank my staff, Ryan and Patricia, the Criminal Justice Committee staff, the Lippman Commission, and Speaker Adams. I urge my colleagues to vote yes on both.
Recognizing Councilmember Menon, followed by Caban, then Gutierrez.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I am thrilled today that we're going to be voting on my bill, intro eleven seventy-five, which would create a program to provide free legal counsel to income-eligible victims of domestic violence. This new right-to-counsel program will help survivors of domestic violence with complex divorce filings, legal costs, and voluminous discovery demands. This is truly an issue of equity, of fairness, of financial empowerment, and honestly, about public safety, because it will help up to eight hundred low-income survivors of domestic violence have the resources they need to obtain an attorney and to be educated on their legal rights in a divorce proceeding. The Women's Caucus fought tirelessly for this and succeeded in getting approximately two million dollars in the latest budget so that a new right to counsel could be implemented for domestic violence survivors with divorce proceedings. I want to thank all the members of the Women's Caucus. I want to thank the Speaker for her support of this, and I want to thank the Deputy Speaker as well for her support, and our Executive Director, Tamar Ferdinand, for her efforts. And I also want to thank the drafter of the bill, Jessie Fang, and policy analyst, Panina Rosenberg, for their work on the bill. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Caban, followed by Gutierrez, then Brewer.
Thank you. I want to take my time to address two of the things that I have been hearing from folks who oppose the, the bills that are up for a veto override. Bills that support low-wage workers that are trying to survive in this city. One, that they hurt small businesses and are to blame for our high grocery prices. Street vendors, or our smallest of small businesses, are not the enemy of micro businesses, or moms and pops, or vice versa, just like delivery workers are not the enemies of grocery shoppers. Their living wage is not the reason for the hikes in your grocery prices. The forty-million-dollar CEO salary of DoorDash might be, though. Big businesses and their greed, corporations and their greed are the true enemy of both, making it impossible for so many people to get by in the city. And the other is that, that, you know, the talk about vending being out of control and that criminal penalties are the only way. Let's talk about what's at stake for these largely immigrant workers. Now more than ever, we have to protect our neighbors. We have a ramped-up deportation agenda. We have a Supreme Court that just ruled that law enforcement can racially profile. The impact of this is incredibly cruel. Civil fines remain. They're there. And yes, there is work we certainly need to do in our communities, and we have a responsibility to do that as municipal elected officials. But I'm going to put my lawyer hat on here for a second. I represented street vendors for years in criminal court. Neighbors who had no other way to put food on their table than work that made sure that we had food on our tables, too. You could have your criminal case dismissed, and the simple fact that the arrest and prosecution exist could be enough to trigger and complete removal proceedings, tearing families apart. That is what's at stake. And I will say, as it, as it relates to the mayor, it is really, really rich for Mr. I'm a working-class mayor to continue to decide with Trump and his deportation agenda and big businesses attempt to build their already filthy wealth, wealth on the backs of workers. And so I hope and I implore my colleagues to vote in favor of the override. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Brewer, then Wrestler. Recognizing Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Brewer, then Russler.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we're passing two bills that get to the heart of what government is supposed to do, make our systems more just, more transparent, and more humane. First, Intro 1238, people held in our city jails are too often denied access to the evidence that will decide their future. The Rikers Commission, which did the hard, honest, and painful work of exposing the failures on Rikers, told us this was one of the biggest gaps we needed to fix. With this bill, we make sure people can finally review their case files on secure tablets. If technology can deliver takeout to your doorstep in minutes, it can certainly deliver the documents that determine someone's freedom. Second, Intro 751, part of our back-home package. When a fire or disaster forces families out of their homes, the chaos is overwhelming. The last thing people need in that moment is to be left in the dark about where to go or how to get help. This bill guarantees that tenants will have immediate, clear information on the resources that are available to them, right there at their scene on a flyer or, excuse me, with a QR code on an FDNY engine. It's a simple step, but one that can make a world of a difference in a family's hardest hour. I'd like to spend the last few seconds echoing what so many of my colleagues have said already about the vote that will override the mayor's veto, but I'll say it in Spanish. Mientras celebramos este progreso, también estamos dando otro paso importante, anulando los vetos del alcalde. Tres leyes distintos que protegen a los trabajadores. Para un alcalde que le encanta decir que él es un campeón de los trabajadores, que él es un campeón de la clase trabajadora, para intentar bloquear estas leyes es una traición. Hoy este consejo le va a dejar muy claro y que todos los New Yorkers nos escuchan, que cuando la alcaldía arrastra los pies, nosotros podemos lograr. Cuando los trabajadores están bajo ataque, nosotros estaremos a su lado. I hope that we can get these vetoes, I hope that we can be successful today, and that's it. Thank you so much. My time's up. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Russler, then Sanchez.
Thank you. Intro 28 is a straightforward traffic and pedestrian safety bill related to commercial bicycle deliveries. I feel strongly that third-party delivery services, such as DoorDash and Uber Eats and others, should be accountable for street and pedestrian safety. They have not been up to now. Passing 28 is a victory. It's hard to regulate this app industry. App officials and lobbyists use dirty tricks to thwart our work to hold them accountable. I am proud to stand up to them, and I thank my co-sponsors for doing the same. Section 10157 of the Administrative Code, which is bicycles used for commercial purposes, already imposes a number of safety regulations on businesses and workers that use bicycles for delivery, such as mandating a commercial cyclist's safety course for workers. The trouble is, third-party delivery services claim they are exempt because their workers are independent contractors. I disagree. The bill does four things. One, make simple updates to Section 10157 to clarify that all businesses and workers using bicycles for commercial purposes must follow existing safety regulations. Number two, it adds "safe and lawful operation of powered bicycles and lithium-ion batteries" to the Commercial Bicycle Safety Course administered by the Department of Transportation. Number three, it eliminates existing language in Section 10-157 that allows the police department to access bicycle delivery workers' personal information that will be stored nowhere except at DOT, and it will be impossible to trace. Number four, it creates a mechanism for enforcement through stronger penalties for repeat violations of current, and importantly, future regulations on the apps. Thank you to Sam Goldsmith from my office, Sarah Swain from the Legislative Division, and everyone else who helped, the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, DOT, Workers' Justice Project, New York Immigration Coalition, and Transportation Alternatives. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Russler, followed by Sanchez, then Salam.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I firstly just want to commend my colleagues on the overriding of these mayor vetoes today on these critically important bills to protect immigrant neighbors and workers in New York City. I would like to just speak briefly on Intro 791, which we're hoping to pass today. There are 5,000 vacant supportive housing units in New York City tonight. It's two and a half times as much as when Eric Adams came into office. It's getting worse by the week. It's disgraceful. There's a similar number of people sleeping in our streets, sleeping in our subways, suffering with mental illness, who desperately need a home with onsite social services. We know supportive housing is the evidence-based, cost-effective solution to chronic homelessness, and yet, due to rank incompetence, we let these thousands and thousands and thousands of units sit vacant. It's just disgraceful. So this bill will finally bring some real oversight and accountability to our supportive housing kind of patchwork of programs, and it provide one simple dashboard that provides real-time data for exactly where the vacancies are in our supportive housing system so we can connect every homeless New Yorker in need to the housing that they deserve. This is so, it's just embarrassing that we have 5,000 vacant supportive housing units, 6,000 vacant NYCHA units. We could be housing 20,000 New Yorkers in need in the housing they deserve, but the failures of the Adams administration are too many to count. This is a step in the direction of how we can fix it, and I hope you all will join me in supporting 791 today. Thank you.
Recognizing-
And can I just thank my Chief of Staff, Molly Haley, who did a great job on this bill, and Karen Clary, who helped us. She used to work for city government. She's now at the Kennedy Institute at Harvard, and she helped us come up with the idea. We modeled this after great work in San Francisco that successfully drove down supportive housing vacancies there. Thank you. Sorry.
Recognizing Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Salam, then Joseph.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to begin with a just big thank you, massive thank you to Speaker Adams for ensuring that this council continues to lead with our hearts and our values as a city of immigrants. The Trump deportation machine is ripping families apart at our daycares, our schools, in our neighborhoods, and the difficult truth is that this city, we can't do very much about it as a municipality, except for this. Intro 47 is the urgent step that we can take right now. By eliminating misdemeanor criminal penalties for vending, we can reduce harmful interactions with law enforcement and protect immigrant vendors from being criminalized and having the long-term consequences of this criminalization. Mayor Adams' veto of Intro 47 is action to make life even harder for these immigrant New Yorkers who are simply trying to make an honest living and provide for their families. As the daughter and the granddaughter of street vendors, this struggle is personal to me. I've heard a lot of arguments from different colleagues and members of the public that the entire vending system is broken. I agree. That is why we have other legislation that is attempting to fix it by expanding access to licenses and strengthening enforcement. Intro 431 attempts to do that. But this today is about what we can do immediately to protect New Yorkers. The council's street vending reform package is one of the few real pathways that we have here as council members to support immigrant New Yorkers, and that's why I'm going to be proud to support and to support and vote with Councilmember Krishnan. And I beseech my colleagues, I beg of you, to think about your values, our values, as a city of immigrants. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Salam, followed by Joseph, then Krishnan.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you to our speaker. I stand with this body to override the mayor's veto on Intro 47, sponsored by Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, because this legislation is about protecting our most basic human rights, that of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, while ensuring public safety through fairness and dignity. In my district, particularly along 125th Street in Harlem, vendors are the very heartbeat of our community. They are also the eyes and the ears, offering an added layer of security and safety. They bring our sidewalks to life, offering cultural resonant goods and food that reflects the vibrant identity of Harlem, serving both residents and visitors alike. These are, in fact, small business owners, many of whom are immigrants, many of whom are people of color, who also face challenges in owning their own brick-and-mortar shops, and who now face the added burden of criminalization simply for trying to earn a living. Intro 47 corrects this injustice. It removes the threat of criminal penalties for unlicensed vending while still allowing for civil enforcement that protects our health and safety. It recognizes that the pursuit of happiness cannot exist when people are locked out of licenses by red tape, that the pursuit of liberty is meaningless when an immigrant mother risks deportation for selling churros on the subway, and that the very pursuit of life is placed at risk when a criminal record blocks access to housing, jobs, and stability. Overriding this veto is not a rejection of order, it's an affirmation of fairness. It is a recognition that public safety is not about punishment, it's about opportunity, it's about dignity, and it's about the freedom to make an honest living. I appreciate the Speaker and this body for taking this crucial step to override the veto as we work towards uplifting New Yorkers who are working simply to put food on their tables.
Recognizing Councilmember Joseph, followed by Krishnan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. My bill, 1240, requires MoJ, upon request of a person in custody or their attorney, to conduct a holistic needs assessment when one is required for acceptance into a court-based alternative to incarceration program. These clinical assessments are to include information on a person's mental health, physical health, intellectual disability, history of trauma, and other conditions or circumstances at the time of the person's arrest. This bill is part of the process to safely reduce the jail population in New York City. We were able to work with the DA's office, MoJ's office, to get this bill right. I commend the efforts of everyone involved in getting along this bill overdue to the finish line, and also in line to closing Rikers Island. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your support in this bill package, and the Chair, the Criminal Justice Councilmember Nurse. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I want to thank Speaker Adams and all the colleagues who have spoken up today and have supported, continue to support, Intro 47B. Let me just paint the picture here of the context we are in right now. 10,000 ICE agents have been added to the federal government payroll. There is talk of the National Guard coming from the Trump administration to New York City, and we are hearing the horrific stories coming out of 26th Federal Plaza. Caught in the crosshairs of this perilous moment are our street vendors, 96% of them who are immigrants in New York City. There is no doubt that we need a comprehensive, well-regulated, enforceable system of street vending in New York City, but it cannot be by putting people in jail simply for selling food to support their family. Those are not our values as a city. There is smart enforcement, and there is harmful enforcement that does nobody any good. This is an example of that. That is why our city council overwhelmingly passed Intro 47B, and that is why I urge all of my colleagues to vote today to override the mayor's veto. But it's far more than the substance of this bill as well. This is a mayor and an administration that have used the power of the veto more times than any other prior mayor since Mayor Bloomberg to consistently undermine the work of this city council. Today, it is this bill. In the past, it has been other pieces of legislation. No doubt, in the future, before December, there will be more to come as well. This is a moment for us as a city council to stand with workers, to stand with immigrants, and to also stand up for us as an institution and to protect the decisions we make and the laws that we enact in this city. I would urge my colleagues to vote in favor of overriding the mayor's veto of Intro 47B. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, recognizing Councilmember Meili.
Hi, I would just like to say, my colleagues are talking about fairness with this bill, 47B, in which we spoke about numerous times. Imagine when the young people of African-American has been selling food, selling little things for their team, basketball team. They have been victimized, they've been put in jail. Their record has never been sponged. So I feel if we talking about real fairness, let's do something with the police system. We got to think about the owners of the stores, that people are standing in front. They pay light bill, they pay gas bill, they pay overhead costs, and someone come right outside and sell stuff. So with that, I feel that this bill has not went far enough for everyone in this city, so I will be voting on. I ask my colleagues to think about that. Veterans have went to jail. Veterans are still in jail for illegally vending. No one has did anything about that or spoke on that. So with that, I say I will be not voting for the override.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intro 20A, bicycle operators.
Amended a couple on general orders.
Intros 47B, 1133A, and 1135A, vendors and delivery workers.
Pursuant to rules 9.10 and 9.60, coupled as a separate question.
Excuse me, Ms. 156, 157, and 158.
Coupled to be filed.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro 1238A, evidence review technology.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1240A, holistic clinical assessments.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1242A, borough-based jails.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered LU360 and RESO1051 through pre-considered LU362 and RESO1053, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management, Intro 751B, emergency response guide.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 791A, vacant supportive housing units.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1175A, civil legal services.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU347 and 348.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
LU349 and RESO1054 and LU350 and RESO1055. 5602, 5604, Broadway rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU353 and LU355, 515 Seventh Avenue.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
LU354 and LU356, 515 Seventh Avenue.
Coupled to be filed.
LU359 and RESO1056, Cozy Corner.
Motion to disapprove.
Pre-considered LU368 and RESO1057, Ocean Crest, Article 11, technical correction.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Intro 867A, intimate care products.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1258A, death records.
Amended and coupled on general orders. Before we move into the vote on general orders, we will now consider the three bills vetoed by Mayor Adams. These bills are introductory numbers 47B of 2024, 1133A of 2024, and 1135A of 2024 out of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. The question before the council now is, shall these three bills pass, the objection of the mayor notwithstanding? I will now call on the clerk to conduct a roll-call vote on the three bills that were vetoed by Mayor Adams.
O.S.A.
Permission to vote on all items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Permission to explain my vote.
Permission granted.
I'm going to vote aye on all, but I wanted to say, for those of you who have concerns about the street vendor oversaturation and the lack of real oversight, that you're correct. You know, we must do better. But I ask you to ask yourselves, if the penalty of an arrest is the fairest way to do this, does the punishment meet the crime? I say, you know, that it does not, and I would further add that as a mother who knows hunger, if I had no other way of making money to feed my children, you best to believe that I would be out there trying to do that in the most respectable way. And I just, you know, I want you to sit on that for a little bit, because I get it. You know, some of us have districts that are really oversaturated and where there's a lot of chaos, and where, you know, reform would be a good thing, and I think we can accomplish that. We have a bunch of bills that we are reviewing now that speak to that, but this is something else. This is saying that, you know, if somebody decides to sell, you know, I don't know, tacos or juices in the street, that that person should be arrested, and that arrest record actually has real consequences, because it means that for those individuals that are selling that are not documented, it also gives the administration more ammunition to start deportation of that person, and I think that that is just cruel and inhumane. And so I vote aye, and I ask, you know, my colleagues to please consider that as well.
Aye on all.
Butcher.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
I vote aye, but I just want to point out that there was a long process of a collaborative NYPD, stakeholders, city agencies, street vendors, retail food stores, property owners, small businesses, community organizations, and they had 16 recommendations, de Blasio administration and Adams administration, and the mayor says, "Street vendors are an integral part of-" And the mayor says, "Street vendors are an integral part of New York City's economy, they give communities unique character," and I'm so thankful for the Street Vendor Advisory Board and their approach to street vending, said Mayor Adams. So, I mean, I can change my mind once in a while, but not after a sixteen, not after six-month process, sixteen recommendations that my agencies were a part of. So I do think we have to continue now. We do need more enforcement, we need to figure out how these vendors work with brick and mortar, we need to consider it really seriously. But working with Street Vendor Project, working with the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, sanitation, police, we can do that. I vote aye. I don't change my mind on issues. Thank you.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So I vote aye on all, but I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments about the need to see through a full package that will address a lot of the chronic vendor concerns that we are seeing, particularly in neighborhoods across the city, especially in the outer boroughs. And I look forward to continuing to be a part of that conversation, because it's well-needed, and with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felder.
I vote no on 47B.
And the rest of your vote, Councilmember Felder?
Sorry, I vote yes on the other two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Proudly vote aye.
Thank you. Hanif.
Permission to vote on all items on today's agenda? Permission granted. Thank you. Your vote, Councilmember?
I vote yes.
Thank you, one moment. Hanks. Holden. Hudson.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I'd like to be associated with all of my colleagues who have spoken in favor of overriding the veto and to those who may not necessarily agree with those remarks, I'd like to challenge you to think of this as an exercise in democracy and the balance of power, to think of the City Council as the equal branch of government that it is, and to think of this as the democratic institution that it is. And with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Joseph.
I vote aye.
Krishnan. Lee. Lewis.
Aye.
Mamorato.
I vote no on all.
Carr.
I vote aye on 47B and accompanying M. 156, and no on the rest.
Councilmember, could you clarify, we're voting on 47B, 1133A, and 1135A?
We're on the override votes? Yes, I'm voting in favor of the override for 47B and no on the other two.
Thank you, thank you, sorry, thank you. Marte.
I vote aye.
Mealy.
May I explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I vote no on all, and I want to thank all the pastors, fifty or more, that called and emailed and said that their faith calls upon us to defend the dignity of workers and to protect access to life essentials. This legislation threatens both. It risks creating a city where grocery delivery is priced beyond the reach of struggling households, where seniors and families in food deserts face new barriers to basic nutrition, and where small groceries, vital anchor of our neighborhoods, are pushed closer to closure. And I want to just thank all these pastors who did reach out to me, and they want to protect affordable access to groceries and to ensure that delivery remains a tool for empowerment, not inclusion. Thank you, and I vote no on all.
Menon. Morano.
No on all.
I vote aye on Intro 3, 1133A and 1135A, and I abstain on Intro 47B.
Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
This is one of the most difficult decisions I have to make. While I'm thinking about the vendors, but I have to think about the small businesses. We all say small businesses are the backbone of our communities, but we need to back it up by that rhetoric with action. Just this week, I have a Jamaican store/restaurant that on Avenue L. have two vendors, one to the left, one to the right. I have a pizzeria, they have vendors right in front of the stores, and when they ask them to leave, they don't have no right over that. And this is the avenue, that avenue alone, not Rockaway Parkway. Rockaway Parkway, forget it. They complain every day to me. And Avenue L. is where I once ran my own small business and served as the president of the merchant association. Today, I have to say, yes, while I'm thinking about immigration, I'm not naive about what's going on around our country, but the decision have to be balanced, and for me, I wish I could do other, I mean, otherwise. I want to make sure the immigration laws are protected, we need to review that. But I'm wary that removing criminal penalties will create an environment where vendors multiply, fueling further tension with the very small businesses that employ our neighbors, our friends, our family. We need to keep our corridors alive. We should be developing solutions that lift both up, not pitting. We cannot pit the vendors that are coming to in front of the stores and the businesses. So, we need to do much more to protect both sides and make sure our New York City, the small businesses remain the backbone of the community, because those folks are paying overhead, and it's a problem for both sides.
Councilmember, your time has expired.
So, I'm going to say no to 47B and yes to the others.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Palladino. Powers.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Wrestler. Riley. Salam.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Aye or no, except for 47B, I vote no.
Sanchez. Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I'm voting aye on all, but what I do want to say is, I've heard from a lot of the small businesses in my community, and I don't believe that it should be a criminal offense for somebody that's an illegal vendor. That said, I'm being told that the fines, the civil fines are very low. I'm having, my staff is doing some research into that, but if they are, I think that this body should consider increasing the fines so that there's some more accountability with this type of situation. So with that, I again vote aye on all.
Stevens. Ung. Vernakov.
Just a reminder to members on the floor that we are still live.
Just a reminder to members on the floor that we are still live. We can resume. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams.
I vote aye, except for intro forty-seven B, which I abstain.
Thank you. One.
I vote aye, and permission to vote aye on all items on today's agenda.
Did you ask for permission? Permission granted.
Thank you. Juang.
Aye.
Thank you. Ariola.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
The mayor veto is an important part of the balance of power in our city, but it's a power that must be used responsibly. While I strongly believe that the veto needs to remain in place, I also believe that this administration has used it more to score political points in an election year than to actually help the people who live and work in this city. The mayor has had the power to end our sanctuary city status when we were being unsustainably swamped with the humanity of the peak of the migration crisis. He chose not to use it. He had the power to bring back city workers who were forced out of their jobs by an unnecessary vaccine mandate. He chose not to use it. He had the power to make sure our EMS workers were paid a fair wage, and that our firehouses were in better shape than a 19th century tenement, and he chose not to use it. Time and time again, he has had the opportunities to fight for the hardworking people of this city, who are trying to eke out a living every single day, but he has chosen to side with the big-moneyed interests and donors. Now that we are closing in on election time, however, he is suddenly, he cares about working people, and veto, his veto pen comes out. I strongly believe in checks and balances that make our country and our city great, but I believe that the power of the veto is important. But I also believe that it must be used responsibly and should not be called out harshly when it isn't, and should be called out harshly when it isn't. Misuse by this administration should not mean that the power of the veto is stripped away forever, but it also shouldn't mean we should turn a blind eye. Therefore, I vote no on override eleven thirty-five, but yes on eleven thirty-three and forty-seven B. Thank you.
Farias.
I proudly vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye on all. The vote is as follows. Intro forty-seven B, thirty-five in the affirmative, nine in the negative, and three abstentions. Intro eleven thirty-three A, forty in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and zero abstentions. Introduction eleven thirty-five A, thirty-nine in the affirmative, eight in the negative, and zero abstentions. Madam Speaker, the City Council votes to override the mayor's veto with two-thirds voting in the affirmative. (APPLAUSE). Madam Speaker, would you like to make a motion on the floor?
Thank you, Majority Leader. Syncing in. Thank you, colleagues. I now ask the Clerk to take a roll call vote on all of the remaining items on today's general orders calendar.
Brennan.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Thank you. Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Thank you. Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye on all.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
No on introductions twenty A, nine-nine-eight, and twelve forty, and aye on the rest.
My apologies, Councilmember Carr.
No on introductions twenty A, nine-nine-eight, and twelve forty, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Thank you. Felder.
Aye.
Thank you. Feliz. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye on all, with the exception of intro twenty A, nine-nine-eight, twelve forty, and twelve fifty-eight A, of which I vote no.
Thank you. One moment. Hudson.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I just want to take a very quick moment to thank my Al Van Legislative Fellow, Omar Richardson. This is his last stated, and he spent the last year serving the constituents of my district in our office. We will miss having him, but I look forward to seeing all that he'll accomplish in the future, including law school. I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all, except reso, is that what we're doing? Sorry. Three sixty-two A, which I abstain.
Thank you. Lewis.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Mamar.
Me?
One moment. Mamorato.
Okay, I'm sorry. I vote aye on all, with the exceptions of intro twenty A, twelve forty, twelve fifty-eight A. I vote no.
Thank you. Thank you. Marte.
Aye on all.
Meili. Menon.
Aye.
Morano.
Aye on all, with the exception of intro twenty A, twelve forty, twelve fifty-eight A, and twelve forty-two.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye on all.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for twenty A, twelve forty, twelve fifty-eight A, twelve forty-two, and I believe that covers it, in which I vote no.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Just to clarify, I'm voting no on introductions twenty A, twelve forty-two A, and twelve forty, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. Powers.
Aye on all.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Holden.
Yeah, correction on my vote. I'm a no on twelve forty-two, and instead of nine-nine-eight, I'm a yes on that.
Thank you.
If there is one.
There's not. There's not. Thank you. Salam.
I vote aye on all.
Mamorato.
I vote no on twelve forty-two. Sorry.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote? Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Leader. I just want to say thank you to HPD and the three different teams, developers, teams that we worked with on Article elevens this cycle, Mid Bronx Esperados, Hybridge Community Housing Corp., and Sycamore Birch. They worked with our office for months and months to reform their proposals to accomplish deeper affordability levels and more family-sized units, as is a priority for our community. And I also want to shout out our Al Van Fellow, Carla Dominguez, who's phenomenally organized and was just such an asset to our team this year. We're going to miss you. You're amazing, and I can't wait to see what comes next. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Granted.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank my Legislative Fellow Avagile Zucker, who, this would be her last stated, and she's been a tremendous help in the office with a number of different things, and I wish her good luck with her future. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
Aye on all except no on intro 28, 1240, 1258A, and 1242.
Thank you. Williams.
I vote aye.
Juang. Thank you. Ariola.
With the exception of 20A, 1240, 1258A, and 1242A, which I vote no, I vote aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of intro 20A, which was adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, 7 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and introduction 1240 and 1242, which were adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, 7 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and introduction 1258A, which was adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 5 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. We will now move to introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to the committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into discussion of resolutions, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Schulman, followed by Sanchez, then Vernikov.
Now, is this general discussion or is this resolutions?
This is... Oh, I'm so sorry, folks. Discussion of resolutions. It's been a long day.
I'm the other, general discussion.
Seeing no one signed up for discussion of resolutions, as I scanned the room, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolution. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolution, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolution into the record. Resolution 362A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Assembly Bill 701 and Senate Bill S988, the Social Worker Workforce Act. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Schulman, followed by Sanchez, then Vernikov.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. In August, New York City faced its first major Legionnaires' disease cluster in about 10 years. Legionnaires is a serious and sometimes deadly illness that is caused by bacteria often found in cooling towers when they are not properly maintained. Each outbreak puts lives at risk, especially older adults, immune-compromised individuals, and those with underlying conditions. Today, I'm proud to introduce intro 1390, legislation that will strengthen New York City's cooling tower inspection requirements. This bill would require building owners to test and inspect cooling towers at least every 30 days during periods of operation, and more frequently if our city experiences a heat-related emergency. Our responsibility is to take every measure possible to prevent these outbreaks before they occur. By ensuring more regular testing and inspections, particularly during extreme heat events when cooling towers are most in use, we will better protect the health and safety of New Yorkers. As Chair of the Committee on Health, I look forward to working with my colleagues and the administration to advance this bill swiftly so that no family has to worry about whether the building they live in or walk past is putting them at risk. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Vernikov, followed by Moreno, then Minority Leader Ariola.
Thank you. Less than two hours ago, we got news of the horrific shooting of Charlie Kirk, who was shot while speaking on a college campus in Utah today. It has now been confirmed that he has passed. May his memory be a blessing. Charlie was a star of the conservative movement and a young, tenacious voice who unapologetically fought for common sense during a time where extremism rules. Today, that voice was silenced by senseless, despicable political violence. We saw in high definition the real-life consequences of extremist rhetoric infecting our society. What we say in these chambers and in the media is not isolated. It has consequences. The dehumanization of public figures has enormous consequences. Now, a wife is left without a husband, and two children are without their father. Something is deeply wrong in America today. May Charlie rest in peace. Thank you.
Before moving on to councilmembers, I'd like to read a vote revision into the record on introduction 1258A, which was adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you. Sorry. I had intended to speak about the legislation that I'm introducing, my bill to make the Staten Island flag official, something that I still believe is a great way to honor the 400th anniversary of New York City, which we're commemorating this year. I even brought each of you a lapel pin with the flags of the United States, New York State, and New York City, all of which are already official. I was going to leave them at each of your desks, but the Sergeant-at-Arms told me I couldn't hand out anything on the floor. They didn't tell me right away, of course. They asked for a pin first, and then told me, which I was only happy to give them. But I... If anyone still wants a pin that I didn't get, I'm happy to give you one. I have a few. But I can't let this moment pass, as my colleague, Councilmember Vernikov, alluded to, without addressing what happened today. The shooting of Charlie Kirk is an attack not just on one person, but on the very idea that we resolve our differences peacefully. Right before this meeting, I saw two of my colleagues, Councilmember Osay and Councilmember Palladino, who are about as far apart politically as you can get and still be on the same planet, talk about how... They were speaking together about how unacceptable this is. And that image of two people with very different ideologies standing united against political violence is exactly the message we need to send. And it's fitting that that conversation happened in these chambers, because 22 years ago, right here, Councilman James Davis was assassinated by someone who didn't understand what Councilmembers Osay and Palladino understand, that we debate here with words, not weapons. Tomorrow happens to be September 11th, a day that reminds us of how tragedy once brought Americans together. Let's not wait for another tragedy to find that spirit again. Let's honor the people we lost by committing to courage without cruelty, passion without hate, and debate without destruction. Thank you.
Recognizing Minority Leader Ariola.
Initially, I was getting up to speak about 9/11, which is the 24th anniversary of 9/11 this month, and, you know, it is a very solemn day for our city. Our city has come back stronger, and we're happy for that. And I know there'll be many different memorial services, whether in the city or in our districts, and I know that we'll all be attending these memorials. And I want to make it clear that we must never forget, and the reason is, is that because we must share the history with our children and our grandchildren. And the reason why I know so much about World War I and II and the Vietnam War and all the conflicts is because we spoke about it at the dinner table, and we were made aware of it. And that's why I will never forget the bombing of Pearl Harbor or any of the other tragic things that happened during war. So it is a solemn day, and my prayers go out to those who lost their lives that day, their families that still mourn them, and those who've lost their lives since. I'd also just like to mention about Charlie Kirk. No matter what your politics, political beliefs are, or your ideology, two children lost their father today, and that we cannot condone. I pray for the Kirk family and for the people across this entire nation, across this country. People need to wake up and learn to engage without name-calling, debate without labeling, and actually make an effort to understand the other side. This is a tragedy, and I can only hope it initiates much-needed change and discussion. We need to end the rhetoric on both sides. Thank you.
Recognizing Minority Whip Palladino.
It's a humbling moment when we start to see the flaws in each other and try to understand each other. I've been in these chambers now for close to four years. I'm very proud of what we do here, but I'm even prouder of our differences, because most sentences start with, "You like Palladino? How do you like... How do you get along with her? Like, what's she about?" And it's through those words that I find it even more important to define who I am, most of you know, and I... To figure out who all of you are. And I think we've accomplished a great deal in getting to know each other better, because I always say, "A kind heart, a bright smile, and a warm handshake makes all the difference in the world." Today, we suffered a loss in the conservative movement. A young, young man of 31 years old was shot and killed today, all because, and we're going to find this all out, so it's really not speculation, it's about political differences. We all are at the end of a gun, so to speak, because we dare not speak out, but I don't do that. And I believe that we all stand very firm in our cause, one that we all believe in, and that's freedom. Freedom of speech. Freedom to say what you think and stand by it, but also to build bridges so that together we could stand united, because if we don't stand united, divided, we will surely fall. And that's what I'd like to say today. Thank you very much, everybody.
Recognizing Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing intro 1373, which calls on the Department of DCAST to conduct a study addressing the feasibility of creating a reimbursement program for the civil service applicants who did not receive an employment offer before their eligible list numbered expired. The inspiration of this legislation came from a constituent who visited my office seeking help after being denied opportunity to move forward on the FDNY's hiring process. Also, too, I want to take the remainder of my time to recognize and pay tribute to a... My scheduler, Deidra Cheatham, who sadly passed away over the weekend. It's hard to sit here and read this, but I felt it important to honor her for her great work she did for the constituents of the 33rd and the 42nd Council District. Deidra was a fighter, passionate about so many causes, including bringing awareness to domestic violence, survivors, autism awareness and resources, a fierce education advocate, and more. During her time in the council, she worked for former Councilmember Steve Levin until he was term-limited, where she helped countless people stay in their homes, get the necessary resources, and more. That same fight she brought with her to my office, and to say I was impressed, was an understatement. Just recently, on two separate occasions, had a constituent call in in the office, and one even pulled me aside at a back-to-school to share how much Deidra's hard work ethic and passion had impacted their lives, whether it was helping them stay in their apartments or securing one-shot deals they had been previously denied from in the past. Deidra was everything you could ask for in a coworker, caring, passionate, and always willing to give good counsel. I, along with everyone in the 42nd Council District, are deeply grateful for all that has been done for us. To Deidra's son and daughter, I'm sorry, but please know that I will always be there for you both. To her family and friends and to her coworkers, past and present, thank you for loving her and helping shape this incredible woman she became. Deidra, get some rest. You will be missed. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. Before we close, I would like to say thank you to all of my colleagues for their steadfast work today in accomplishing the mayoral overrides today. I would also like to associate myself with the comments of Councilmember Moreno, and thank you for expressing so eloquently the way that we should all feel about this senseless shooting today. It is horrific, and we are all very saddened by it. Thank you so much, Councilmember. On a brighter note, I would like to acknowledge that we have been joined this afternoon by the newest addition to the City Council. Our wonderful legislator-in-chief, Jeff, I will call her, Andrea Velazquez, gave birth this afternoon to beautiful baby Fiona. Eight pounds, 12 ounces, that's a big girl. Andrea, if you're watching, I hope you're not watching, but God bless you, God bless your family, and we thank you for your service to this council. Thank you so much, colleagues. The stated meeting of September 10th, 2025 is hereby adjourned.